This regular meeting of the Board of Education for July 11th, 2017 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Before we start our agenda this evening, I'd like to acknowledge the other new Board members, aside from me, who are starting their terms and are at their first evening meeting this night. Director Rita Moore and Director, let's see, where is everybody? Director Scott Bailey. And also, yeah. And also, welcome to our new student rep, Moses Tran. I'm not sure this is going to warrant applause, but I'm going to also like to welcome General Counsel Jim Harris to the Board table. It used to be a standard district practice to have the General Counsel at the Board table during its meeting. The practice had been discontinued, but we're restarting this practice of having Counsel at the Board table to advise us during our meetings. Whether it's advice about public meeting requirements, policy, or state law, we're looking forward to Mr. Harris's participation. And in advance, Mr. Harris, I'd like to ask you to actively advise us as appropriate. So don't hesitate to jump in with your advice. We welcome it. With that, I'm going to ask Director Rosen to introduce the first agenda item.
This is in recognition, oh, I'm sorry. This is in recognition of Morrison Hand in Hand. I'd like to introduce Mark Van Humison, Principal of the Portland Dart School, who'll say a few words about the history of the Morrison Hand in Hand partnership. And introduce Drew Henry McWilliams, Chief Executive Officer for Morrison Child and Family Services. Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Awad, Chair Rem Edwards, and other members of the Board. My name is Mark Van Humison. I'm the Principal for the Portland Dart School here in PPS. We partner with children's mental health providers for youth receiving day and residential mental health care around the Portland Public School District. PPS staff work alongside the treatment staff for therapeutic and academic support for the students. Our program has had the honor of working over the last 25-plus years with Morrison Child and Family Services in their Hand in Hand Day Treatment Program. Drew Henry McWilliams, the CEO of Morrison, is here with me tonight, as well as Jennifer Wisher from Morrison. She worked, has been with, started or worked at Hand in Hand back in 1994. And Linda Teal, who worked at Hand in Hand starting back in 1989. So if you could just give them a big round of applause for all of their work. And again, the focus of the Hand in Hand Day Treatment Program was to work primarily over time with three- to six-year-olds who have been, have experienced severe abuse or trauma. And again, this is my 13th year of working as an administrator here in Portland Public with the Portland Dart School. And I've worked alongside Morrison staff at all different levels and have to come to really value and appreciate their professionalism, their commitment, and their care on behalf of young children. Their fierce determination to facilitate the healing and improvement of children's emotional and mental health challenges has been inspiring and humbling all at the same time. In our partnership, like I've said, we focused on the therapeutic and academic growth for children. And what I'd like to do for a second, if you look around your table up there, there's little blue Tupperware containers. And this has got flubber in it. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with flubber. But if you want to just grab a little bit and take it out.
Blue must be the evening of the color.
I didn't bring a shield, so just don't throw it at me. And the reason I wanted to bring this is a couple reasons. You know, for four-year-olds, this is pretty important academic stuff. There's language arts that's involved in this in terms of, you know, getting your basic literacy, you know, around reading. There's the math about the measuring. You'd be surprised how long it took me this afternoon to actually get the right consistency for this. I don't want to, longer probably than it did for a four-year-old. So there's the academic piece, there's also emotional, behavioral, and mental health pieces in this as well. There's focus, there's attention, there's teamwork. And all of those things, PPS and Morrison has worked on Hand in Hand for a long, long time. You know, it's also analogous to the work that Morrison has done. It's flexible, it's creative, and you just don't want to let it go. Unfortunately, though, due to budget concerns, for mental health providers, the Morrison Hand in Hand Treatment Program actually had to close as of June 30th. So our partnership around Hand in Hand has ended. We partner with other Morrison programs, so that partnership is still there. One thing I wanted to say, though, is even though the program has closed, Morrison was committed, professional, all the way to the very end with the very last student. And that's something I just wanted to share with you as a group as well as to the public that's here tonight. Their commitment didn't end when they found out the program was closing. Their commitment went until that last child got on the bus. And so, again, I have a plaque for them as well, and Drew's going to say a few words, but if we can just give some more acknowledgement to the Morrison community who did that work over time.
I don't think you can get it off your hands.
Like I said, this is, I'm not a professional flubber maker, so.
And I wore the right color shirts. So I just want to say, as a mental health and substance abuse therapist and supervisor, I've just had such a great crew and the teaching staff and all of the staff from Portland Public Schools have been just wonderful over the years. We've learned so much together. I'm so grateful. And for the little kids who are now bigger kids and adults, because we've been around quite a long time, I'm just grateful to everybody. And the good news is, on one hand, and this wasn't Portland Public Schools money that went away, it was, it was mental health dollars. But we sort of put ourselves out of business, and that's the good news, in that we've increasingly, over the years, had staff who are doing home and school-based. So we have a lot of Morrison staff who are working in various Portland Public Schools alongside students and teachers. So we're grateful for, you know, whatever ways things morph, as long as we can keep helping kids. So thank you very much.
All right. And finally, before we go, this is a plaque from Portland Public Schools presented to Morrison Child and Family Services in recognition and appreciation of your contributions to PPS students and staff at Hand in Hand. So I would shake Drew's hand, but I'm just going to hand him the plaque tonight, so. Mark and Drew, thanks for your presentation partnership, and we want to get a picture of you all with the Board.
We'd love that.
Yeah, just, yeah, right down here.
We're next going to move to our public comment period, and we're going to start with student testimony. And we have one student signed up this evening. It's Madison Bailey. So Madison, if you want to come forward. And while you're coming forward, I'm just going to briefly review our guidelines for public comment, just for both the student testimony and the other testimony tonight during the public comment period. So the Board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting, and students, especially during the summer. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen with our electronic devices turned off and our flubber put down. Our guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration for others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the Superintendent's Office as a personnel matter. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name. And when it gets, you'll have three minutes, the first two minutes, there's going to be a green light. Then when you have one minute left, you have a yellow light, and when your time's up, a red light. And then we'd ask that you conclude your comments, and we appreciate your input. And go ahead. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hi, my name is Madison Bailey, and today I'm speaking on behalf of Benson students. Today, I want to encourage all of you to rethink your decision on eliminating Benson Polytechnic's sports program. Benson's sports have impacted me personally, as well as many other athletes. Reasons why high school sports benefit students. One, many studies have found that student athletes are less likely to participate in unhealthy and risky behaviors when they are playing or involved in sports during their high school career. Two, according to the Department of Education, students who spend no time in extracurricular activities in high school are 49% more likely to use drugs and 37% to become team parents. Just four hours in extracurricular activities, doing sports each week dramatically improved those numbers. Three, studies shown that athletes have a higher GPA than non-athletes. One study showed that the average GPA of a high school athlete is 2.84, while the average GPA of a non-athlete was 2.68. When it comes to myself, playing sports gives me a purpose. It also allows me to be part of a team. For this reason, I make sure I have passing grades so I can play sports. Four, athletes on the field or on the court all share the same goal. They want to win, and to win, you have to work together and communicate and make sure everyone has a job to succeed the common goal. During sports, players make new friends who will always be there to help them through anything. When I first came to Benson, I didn't really know anyone until I joined the soccer team. And now the ladies that are a part of my team, I can call them family, because I know I can count on them. Playing sports teaches the three Ps: persistence, patience, and practice. These three Ps help athletes stay focused and work together as a team. These lessons can be used beyond the field or court and can extend into the classroom. The three Ps are lessons that can be used throughout our life. Thank you.
Next, we're going to shift to the rest of the public comment, and the first person who signed up is Jessica Thompson. And also, we have Richard Greenstead.
My name is Jessica Thompson, spelled J-E-S-S-I-C-A-T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. My son is a sophomore at Jefferson High School. I'm here today to talk specifically to the white school board members, and since the Teachers Association is here, I would like also to address white educators. I look at the Board and I think of the perspectives who are missing. You are an overwhelmingly white Board, like the majority of public institutions in Oregon. You oversee a school district that is 45% students of color. My son is one of those students. I've seen firsthand how PPS's institutional and personally mediated racism has impacted him. I know that the racial achievement and opportunity gap is real because I can read data and facts, and because I have watched it play out for my son over the past 10 years at PPS. You believe, for whatever reason, that you, as a white person, know how to transform PPS for the better for our students of color. You believe, for whatever reason, that you, as white people, can and will make decisions that will make our district an emotionally and physically safe place for our children and staff of color, as well as an academically enriching environment. You are about to make some huge decisions regarding school enrollment boundaries and school configurations. This is deep, important work that will leave lasting impacts for all of our students, and most specifically, our Black and Brown students. I'm going to leave you with a mirror and these questions. Please look into the mirror every day and ask yourself these questions as you take on the work of enrollment balancing and searching for a new superintendent. One, are you in conversation and trusting relationship with leaders in the Latino, African-American, Pacific Islander, Asian, and Native communities? Time is a limited resource. How many minutes do you devote to listening and responding to white constituents versus reaching out and listening to families of color who have been most negatively impacted by Portland's racist policies and practices? Remember, equal is not the same thing as equitable. Are you emotionally and psychologically strong enough to withstand the enormous blowback that will follow any decisions that threaten the comfort and privilege afforded to white parents and children in this district? How can I use my whiteness to elevate the voices, perspectives, and work of students of color, their families, and staff? And finally, why do I believe what I believe? How is it informed by my whiteness? What if I am wrong? Can I entertain the possibility of being wrong? Am I seeking accountability from communities of color? I include myself in this. As white people, we can and must do better.
Is Richard Greenstead here? If not, I'm going to call up Elaney. Yes. Elaney, are you here? I don't think so. So I'm next going to call up two other individuals, Deverias Sly Clay and Smith Lai. Go ahead.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
My name is Deverias Sly Clay, and I've been the head football coach at Benson for the past two years. I was also a proud member of the last class, 2007, to be accepted into Benson through the SA system. My question to you is why? Why take away an admission process that allowed us to thrive as a school? A system where young men and women were chosen based on their ability to continue to add to the prestige of Benson by the Benson administration? Instead, a system that was in place for decades was replaced by a computer that randomly selects and protects other schools more than it allows Benson to get back to where it fell from. Why must we be shackled so others can roam freely, treated like a stepchild instead of PPS's own flesh and blood? We may not be Lincoln, Grant, or Wilson, but are we not still a member of this district? Don't see us injured and make the world think we did this to ourselves. Why entertain the idea of cutting sports at Benson? Athletics are every kid's opportunity to grow athletically, mentally, physically, and socially while allowing them to represent their school and community. Sports keep kids out of trouble and have been proven to boost GPAs, self-esteem, and overall high school experiences. Bleed orange and sweat blue isn't just a saying, it's a lifestyle. You say we're not competitive yet at district athletic meetings and trainings. We're always told it's not about wins and losses. Sports are unique because at any given moment, a team can shine, but at any moment, a team can crumble. If competitiveness is a concern, let us play down at 5A or 4A where our numbers match up and give us a better chance to be competitive. We shouldn't be forced to be at 6A just because athletic officials want us on the same platform. You say it's about safety, and in my sport, I can truly understand that, but at the same time, because of our situation, we take extra precautions to ensure safety. I suited up 17 to 26 kids every varsity game and always walked around, or walked away with those same kids. Yes, we suffered injuries, but that's the nature of the game. When we're growing up, we learn from these experiences, and what doesn't kill you makes you stronger. We treat safety as a crutch on why kids shouldn't play certain sports, but more goes into safety than just numbers. You could have 100 kids on a team, and you're still going to have injuries based on your preparation habits. The only difference is it's more noticeable when you have lower numbers, but a person can get injured walking down the street, but we don't tell them, hey, don't walk down the street. You say it's about viability, but viable to who? In our community and school, every sport viable is viable if we have kids who want to play. In Illinois, there's a school with 18 kids in it that are planning to start a football team. Their principal didn't say that's not viable. He said it only takes 11. Jeff won a state basketball championship with six guys, and the league was proud. You never said it's not viable. The district athletic proposal asks to either take all sports away or some sports away. And if there wasn't a sport, kids have to go to their neighborhood schools. So you're asking a lot of our students to leave school early or get to practice late because we all know that our kids come from the four winds of Portland and Gresham to go to Benson. That's like the force-busting of Black students in 1960s and 70s before the Black United Front stopped it in the 80s. Please explain to me how that's a good idea.
You can just wrap up your final thought.
Okay. The district athletic office wants us to take our feelings away and clear, take our feelings away, but their decision to eliminate sports at Benson is clearly all feeling. They don't feel we're competitive or viable. The past fall, at a meeting, I had a district athletic official walk up to me and say, hey, Coach, I didn't think you were going to win a game this season. So at that moment, my feeling was you never took the time to notice the measurement of our kids' hearts. In closing, if the district wants to really help us, you guys have to stop kicking us while we're trying to get up. Give Benson the old acceptance policy back, or at least get rid of the lottery system because it's a joke. Let us play down a classification or two because that's what's best for our students, and stop fearing the inevitable, which is Benson and its students are destined for greatness. Embrace our culture and what we stand for. Thank you.
So I just want to thank both of the Benson speakers and want to note that there's not a proposal to eliminate sports at Benson that's before consideration of the Board, and I would ask the Benson's community to engage with the Superintendent and the district staff, but currently, there's not a proposal under consideration by the Board. Are you Smith Lai?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Smith Lai. My last name is spelled L-A-I. As a member of the Scott School community, I want to thank all of you for your service and dedication to the students of Portland, and especially appreciate the hard work of D-BRAC related to boundaries and enrollment rebalancing. We ask you to continue to put forth the guiding values identified by D-BRAC: equity, access, and environment. At the forefront when making decisions, to clarify and empower a leader to take action and to move immediately to address the Madison Cluster's needs for middle school and a strong, fully-enrolled elementary schools. We know that the funding model, where more students equals more funding, rather than funding based on programs, is at one branch of the root of our problems. Schools with multiple programs fare the worst, schools like Scott, where there are currently three co-located programs. Neighborhood immersion and middle school are left with the largest gaps. We're also aware through our experience, as well as research and data collecting over the years, that our schools' hardships are not unique and exist as part of a larger, longer history of segregation and redlining in Portland, pushing people of color and low-income folks into particular areas in schools while keeping them out of others. We are aware of the history of closing schools, particularly at the middle school level, in those traditionally diverse neighborhoods like ours. We know that there's been much hand-wringing about what to do about the achievement gap for students of color and English-language learners, and have seen firsthand what programs like dual-language immersion can do to help all kids succeed in schools like ours. But it isn't enough to bring in a program if doing so creates competition for resources within the school, and it isn't enough when the programming at the subsequent levels, middle and high school, is inadequate. We're here to ask the leadership at the district for the following. Clarify who is in charge of the process and making decisions. Assign an assistant superintendent or other empowered decision-maker in PPS as leader of the D-BRAC process to move this process forward and enact change now. Open Roseway Heights as a middle school for our Madison Cluster in Fall 2018, but do it right. You've got an example of what not to do, as well as the data collected through the process of opening Oakley Green to make sure that Roseway Heights is well-staffed and prepared. Do not under-enroll us and our Madison Cluster sister schools. Do not set us up once again to fail. When figuring out the new boundaries, increase the ideal number for Scott School and other co-located programs to 600, from the proposed 450, to ensure adequate staffing and robust programming. Plan for two strands each of neighborhood program and dual-language immersion program. We'd rather be crowded and fully funded than limping along and set up to fail. Do not open Rose City Park as a neighborhood school. Opening Rose City Park continues to divide populations by income and race through their whole K-12 experience at PPS. Instead, redistribute those students into existing schools, Scott, Jason Lee, and Vestal. We expect all schools and boundaries to be put on the table. We expect courage and creativity. Look at the high school feeder patterns. In our history, segregation like this was absolutely intentional. In the D-BRAC process, we have the opportunity and the responsibility to reverse that wrong and become a better city. Portland is a model city in so many ways, but our educational inequities are a glaring scar that reveals our racist past. Be willing to make some of the overcrowded schools smaller and more diverse by moving more affluent kids. Don't squander this opportunity to finally and truly fix the problems created and sustained over generations.
Thank you. We have two last people signed up for public comment, Ginevra Westfoyle and Rob Johns. Is Ginevra here? Are they?
I have a son who will be entering first grade at Scott Elementary in the fall. Some of my fellow Scotties are here, too. I'm here today with concerns about what happens to good principals and teachers in PPS when they do not have support and leadership at the top. In June, our community and Scott School learned that our excellent principal, Too Trong, was leaving our school and PPS. She was and is a skilled administrator and also a woman of color who sought problems and solutions through an equity lens and who stood as a role model to the majority of our students, who are also kids of color. Her resigning is a great loss for Scott School and for PPS, but we understand why she's leaving. We also know that other talented leaders will continue to leave if PPS does not address the myriad problems and barriers administrators face in building and maintaining healthy and equitable programs. The lack of stable leadership from above and the subsequent departure of staff has led to conditions where talented principals and teachers are quickly getting burned out and leaving. This puts schools like ours at a further disadvantage because we can't get consistency or stability with a new principal every few years. Scott School is a wonderful place, and we are very proud of it. We are one of the most racially and linguistically diverse schools in the district, both in terms of staff and students. We have talented and dedicated staff, active parents, and engaged community partners. We are also one of the lowest-performing schools in the district and have struggled with a bad reputation in the community and in the press. Our school has suffered a lot of trauma over the past few years with staff turnovers, unstable leadership, and most recently, with the political climate. Too Trong put a lot of work over her two years with our school, stabilizing programs and building trust and community. We need a new leader who will continue her excellent work. My son and his classmates deserve a stable learning environment, one in which they are supported and encouraged to grow. We ask the Board to keep in mind schools like Scott as you search for a new superintendent. Getting a good superintendent who can hire and attract reliable, competent staff, teachers, and administrators, and bring in systems that work for principals and teachers, not against them, is extremely important. Thank you for your time, and please remember our testimony as you work to find a new superintendent and stabilize Portland Public Schools.
Thank you for your testimony, and I just want to note that as a new Board, we're going to soon be organizing our work and our priorities, and I know that enrollment balancing and forecasting is going to be a priority. We've already had Board members step up and say they want to lead and work with the Superintendent and staff and the school community, so it's going to be a priority of this new Board. So thank you for the testimony so far. And now, Mr. Johns. I have a feeling we're going to hear more about the Techmen, the Techers.
How could you tell? So for the record, my name is Rob Johns. I am a member of the Benson Alumni Association, Class of '77, and I lettered at Benson Tech. Mr. Harris, would it be okay if I handed out our alumni text for 100 Year Centennial to, so that everyone could maybe have a copy? We're a proud school that just celebrated 100 Year Centennial. We had three days of a grand reunion, and we had a wonderful, hundreds and hundreds of turnout. So to our point today, and Madam Chair, I just want to thank you for your offer, that there was a letter that would be signed if we, as I understood it, if we didn't show up today, we would already have this signed.
That wasn't quite the offer, but I'm willing to sign it regardless.
Great. We would like to have a verification of your position, that there is nothing on the table to limit the sports for Benson Tech. And we would ask that we, as a community, would be a part of future studies, and that when we see things like outside see things like outside consultants who are hired by the athletic department to create reports, that we would be a part of such a process. So, Rob, just to-
I'm sorry, Ms., Director Rosen, this is a public comment for us to listen to the community.
So, I, I'm, I'm trying to avoid the use of, of any names. I would just ask that we, with regard to that, uh, who, who is managing this process or person who is responsible for directing these types of reports? Um, apparently, there's been some wonderful success in the school system for increased participation. We've moved from five thousand students participating to six thousand students participating. But when I look at the core beliefs, I don't see anything in the core beliefs of the sports athletic programs that says participation is really a viable measurement. All we're seem to be concerned about is the lack of competition as viewed by an individual. We spent a million dollars probably on new coaches. We've only got a thousand more kids. So I ask you, where is the money being spent and is this being evaluated? We look for trust with the board. We look for partnership. We would also ask a consideration of lifting the cap at Benson Tech. It would solve a lot of problems. So, I know my time's ending. I'm not gonna belabor. I would just ask that we be greater participants to any process that would come into a consultant's arrangements. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm just gonna ask, recognize Director Rosen briefly.
I apologize for interrupting, Rob. So, you had mentioned that the report, which is the audit of school, uh, student activities, was produced by the athletic department, and that's not true. It was produced by the audit committee, which I'm the chair of, but it did consult with the athletic department and other, um, portions of the administration, and it's also a draft report, and as I've said, we welcome your feedback on the draft so that we can appropriately revise it.
So for the Benson community members, I would encourage you to be working with the superintendent and Director Rosen, um, going forward, and thank you for participating. So that wraps up our public comment for this evening. Um, our next, um, agenda item is a community presentation on Tubman Open Enrollment, and, um, community members requested time on tonight's board meeting to address the board regarding open enrollment at Tubman. I'm going to ask the following individuals: Ronnie Herndon, Tony Hopson, Joe McFerrin, and the Reverend Leroy Haynes to come forward and share a perspective about open enrollment opportunities at Tubman Middle School and other issues. Thank you.
Madam Chair and, and Board, my name is Tony Hopson, President CEO of Self-Enhancement E., if I need to spell that, H-O-P-S-O-N. I appreciate the opportunity to, to be before you, uh, today. Uh, we, we, I've, I've heard a lot of testimony already, and, and I think what we want to talk about in part is the fact that if some of the things that's being shared, uh, at this table is not done, it's kinda like the final result of the worst possible scenario, is some of the things that we've been reading about lately with some of the violence, be it racial violence or gang violence. Uh, it manifests itself in, in some pretty, uh, ugly ways, and we think that there's some root causes that take our young people to that point, uh, and education would certainly be one of them. A few weeks ago, we had the opportunity, based on some of the violence that we've been seeing and dealing with, to pull together a group of, uh, black men. There was over two hundred black men showed up at Self-Enhancement E., uh, in part just to say that we don't condone what we're reading about and seeing. We don't believe that we can continue to stand on the sidelines and allow it to happen. So, what then can you do? And in many cases, you will find folks pointing fingers at all of the system folks. I mean, we could come here and point fingers at you. We could point fingers at the police. We could point fing, fingers at a variety of folks. But realistically, then what can you do? So, we've decided that there are some specific things that we can do, and part of the root causes, we believe, is one, housing, and if you look at, uh, the fact that the low-income housing has all been pushed to outer east, and now you have a lot of low-income folks and a lot of folks of color that are pushed that direction to find housing. We think employment is a problem, uh, not jobs for a lot of folks who, young folks who need jobs, can't find jobs, uh, so that's an issue. And then education, and the fact that if you look at the data, uh, folks talked about data earlier, we can recognize in the data that there's a lot of low-income folks, uh, children, and children of color that are at the bottom end, or, or those that are being pushed out of school. Dropout rate very, very high for kids of color, uh, suspension expulsions very, very high for kids of color, and it's kinda like, where do you expect them to show up at? So, these are some of the root causes. So today, what we want to talk to you about, uh, and there's about four of us that want to just share a little information and hopefully give you some strategies that we could actually do. Instead of coming here and pointing fingers at you, we, we come to you with some ideas that we think can at least start us in the right direction as it relates to education, uh, specifically in this particular case, as I sit here and recognize that there are a number of kids, low-income children, children of color, that are struggling. But today, this body is here to talk to you about black children and the issues that are impacting them.
Joe McFerrin, uh, President and CEO, Portland OIC, and the Rosemary Anderson High School. So I stand here together, um, with my mentors and then the, and the fellows that I've, I've stood on their shoulders as I've developed as a young person, and I stand with them in this effort. Um, as most of you know, we are an organization that serves children who many other organizations choose not to serve, and I feel our value proposition to the community is that we'll have an open door for kids who struggle. Unfortunately, uh, most of our kids in our alternative schools are kids of color, and the problems that I've seen over my twenty-two years in the business, it didn't start in high school. It started long before high school. And as an organization, um, not only are we in education, but we're also in violence prevention and intervention. We have, uh, about twenty staff members that work with young people throughout the community to try to prevent violence. And I can say to you, uh, violence has always been an issue, but we're on the precipice of something even scarier. Um, if you look at any research around serial forced displacement, and that's what, uh, Mr. Hopson is referring to when he talks about the gentrification, it always leads to increased violence. And so, we see it each and every day. Every day I go to work, and I work with our staff, our students and families, we are dealing with the impact of violence, and I would like to hope that we're making a difference. But I can tell you that no matter how many campuses that Rosemary Anderson opens throughout this city, uh, no matter how many efforts that we make, it, it's not gonna really make a difference at the level that we want to, to see with African-American children unless we take some bold steps. So I'm here to say that I'm happy that, that we've got a new board. I'm happy about the leadership. Uh, I'm confident that, uh, this board will have the courage, uh, to really listen to our recommendations, take them serious, and if, if done so, uh, I can assure you that we'll, we'll all be here in support of that effort and, and, and in support of our children and our families and our community.
Madam Chair, uh, other board members, my name is Ronnie Herndon. Last name is spelled H-E-R-N-D-O-N, and I'd like to speak a little bit about Tubman, why it was created, and some, uh, steps that we feel need to be taken to address the recreation of Tubman. Tubman was created because albina middle school children, and those specifically King, Humboldt, Elliott, Boyce, and Irvington, never had the assigned middle school promised by Portland Public Schools. Our children were bust and scattered all over Portland. The albina community organized and forced Portland Public Schools to develop a middle school for their children. At the suggestion of albina resident Sherry Hager Warren, the middle school was named Harriet Tubman. That happened right here in this building. Racist redlining and other unscrupulous tactics displaced many thousand albina families. We are here to ensure Portland Public School Board develops policies to enable these displaced children the right to return to Tubman and its feeder schools. It would be the height of injustice that the very community that fought for the creation of Tubman for its children will now be told that because of racist policies that has forced this community out, that those children cannot return to Tubman, and we are depending upon this school board to have the courage to make the kind of decisions and create the kind of policies that all of this discussion about equity will now hopefully see the light of day. So we- We look forward to coming back in a couple of weeks and, and hearing proposals and policy changes that you will be recommending, and Tony, out of modesty, did not say a great deal about Jeff. Many of us were offended that Jeff was not on the bond measure that was recently passed. Given the work that has been done at Jeff, the increased graduation rate that has been spectacular, the increased GPA that is, that has been outstanding, we find no reason why Jeff should not have been, it's one of the oldest buildings around. Uh, somebody said it's getting to be raggeder than Nickel Santa, Ca, Sauerkraut, but I didn't say that. We think that there need to be, just like with Tubman, there need to be very specific proposals made about how Jefferson is going to be renovated very quickly, not in four years. Plans need to be developed now that speak to equity, fairness, and to a community that has supported this school that all too often has been on the chopping block. It seems like every five or ten years, somebody has a proposal about closing Jeff. Now is the time, given the tremendous amount of progress that's been made, that specific steps need to be taken to renovate Jeff. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Before, uh, we move on, I just want to make a, a couple comments as it relates to the right to return. We know on the housing side that that's been done, that we already have a right-to-return policy. There's a preference policy that has been put together that the community was very, very involved in with. We would hope that we would have something similar through Portland Public Schools that would become policy. Now, we already know that there are literally hundreds, if not thousands, of kids who live in outer east that are attending Portland Public Schools every single day and having to use other folks' addresses to do so. We, we'd like to get away from that, uh, and, and just have it, have it be policy, one, and have transportation to go with it. But as we sit down and have this discussion, I need to say this, that two years ago, I had the conversation with the then-superintendent, uh, about Tubman. We actually closed our charter school, an award-winning charter school, with the thought that Tubman was coming online so that we could partner with you at Tubman, and then I got the call from the interim superintendent saying, "We're gonna put this on hold." I got that call because I'm sure he was afraid that the community was going to, uh, show up and be very, very upset with that particular decision. We did not do that because we were assured that we would have the opportunity to have full discussion from a community perspective about Tubman, its principle, its curriculum, and some culturally specific services that would go along with that. So we're here today to say, we want to take you up on that, and hopefully, uh, you will follow suit with what your superintendents, both of them, have said with regards to our ability to have some say in what eventually occurs at Tubman Middle School and have it then feed in to Jefferson High School. We're talking about equity. If we're talking about children of color, I mean, I'm, I'm sure this doesn't come as a surprise to you, but what, two years ago, the city of Portland was considered the most gentrified city in the entire, in the United States of America. Three years ago, the state of Oregon had the worst graduation rates in the entire country. Obviously, we have some work to do.
Should we let them finish their presentation?
Lustrous Chairperson and distinguished members of the, uh, school board, I am the Reverend Dr. Leroy Haynes, S-H-A-Y-N-E-S, representing the Albana Ministerial Alliance, the oldest alliance in the north and northeast community, representing over two hundred churches. I come in support of the right-to-return policy to correct an ill that has been done to the African-American community, and the last census stated that over ten thousand African-Americans were forced out of the city. A great injustice has been done unto a base of diversity in the great city of Portland, and we would like you to take a leadership role as an educational institution in correcting that problem by having a right to return. Those children and youth will have the option to return to the school district and the school of their choice. I thank you, and we look forward to your support on this issue.
So, I wanna, would you, like, did you want to say something as well?
I'd love to.
Please, and then I'm gonna, um, just briefly address it and then also recognize Director Constan.
My name is Mike Alexander, A-L-E-X-A-N-D-E-R, and I'm a past president and CEO of the Urban League of Portland. It's been a couple of years since I've been in front of, uh, this board, and there are a number of new members. I welcome you. I welcome you to the challenge. I have watched you on TV, though, and I've watched, uh, with great interest. Um, and I think many of those sessions, I turned off the TV and said, "You know, we have huge problems. I mean, difficult, difficult work to do." But I'm here today in advancing what I know to be a proven strategy that works. You know, I've had the pleasure of listening to three gentlemen who have been responsible for nationally-renowned programs from the preschool through the secondary school level, and they've identified models and strategies that not only focus on communities of color, but create what I call a new definition of community, and a new definition which is those things that we all care about bind us. And we have the opportunity today to not simply frame this as a discussion focused on communities of color as much as a discussion advanced by communities of conscience. It is unconscionable for us to develop the level of comfort that we've developed in looking at the under-preparation and the under-education of our children, and one of the ways in which we can best do that is to bring the combined efforts of dedicated educators, dedicated community groups and organizations, and institutions who are focused on the unique needs of children who we are responsible to educate and provide for their safety. The Tubman model is a workable model. The coalition that supports it will be here with you every step of the way, and I hope that it's time for us to take a courageous, a courageous step forward and create new history, because the history behind us is not a proud one. We have the opportunity to rewrite it. Thank you.
So I want to thank you, you all, um, just from my previous service on the board. Um, Mr. Hopson, I think I was on the board when we approved your, your charter in the first place, that for all that you've done for the community, and what I'd like to ask is, um, the two vice chairs potentially to, um, sit down and, and meet with you and find out more about it. So, uh, Vice Chair Sparza Brown has been the chair of the Teaching and Learning Committee, and, um, Vice Chair Moore has been very involved in the enrollment and balancing issues over the last, um, two or three years, so, or more, eight, sorry, I didn't mean to shorten, change you. Um, and I think together that two of them can, um, start a dialogue of how we can, you know, what you're thinking about in terms of a policy and what that might look like and how it would fit with other configurations of how we're gonna- it would fit with other configurations of how we're going to...
Yeah, we'd love to meet next week so we can report back to the community very quickly and then come back to the school board in perhaps two weeks.
Yeah, so perhaps let's email. I am PSU and I'm teaching an intensive class all this week, but next week, we will find some time because this will be high on my agenda certainly.
Look forward to meeting with you.
I'd like to...
I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank you for being here and also give a little bit of context as to the process right now for the middle school planning and the superintendent might want to chime in. But, you know, we have staff dedicated right now to building upon a framework for Tubman, and part of that is the enrollment balancing. And so I absolutely think you're right on in saying, right of return has been codified by the city and the Housing Bureau as not only a warranted but a practical policy that can be implemented in that sphere, which I absolutely believe it can be implemented in this sphere, too. But as a district, we need to look at, you know, how would reserving those spots affect the feeder patterns, all that whole enrollment balancing question. So I just wanted to put it in a little bit of context of work that's underway and say, "Thank you for being here, you've been heard, you have a great venue for continuing to explore it, and let's use the momentum that we're starting to get in bringing Tubman online for the 1819 school year and make sure that it serves the purposes that you've so rightly brought before us this evening."
So I think that sooner than later is certainly the answer, too, so we will want to be with you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
And this time, I'd like to invite Suzanne Cohen, President of the PAT, or the Portland
Thank you very much, and good evening, and thank you for this time on the agenda. I also really want to thank everyone who gave public comment before, very moving testimony, as well as a lot of the messages are really going to resonate with a lot of what I have to say tonight. But I do also want to start with some congratulations. Congratulations, Moses, and Rita, and Chair Julia, and Scott, welcome to the board. Jim, I haven't met you yet, but I am looking forward to working with you. And so congratulations on that, and also congratulations for our newly appointed Chair, Julia Brem Edwards, very excited, and for Rita and Julia to be vice chairs, this is great news. In the past, I met twice a month with the co-chairs, and I would like to formally ask that we do that as well, and maybe starting next week because we've got a lot of work to do. And so what I want to talk tonight about and why we're all here is to really address leadership in PPS and stability in PPS, a topic that's already been mentioned. And if you'll bear with me, I'd like to use a metaphor or analogy of a three-legged stool that supports our public school system. And so one leg would be district management, and then another leg would be your staff, your frontline educators who work with the students, you know, educate, us PAT members as well as our classified, our principals, the people in the buildings doing the work, and the third leg being community represented by you, voted by our community members. So the first leg of our stool, district management, is a broken leg, as we're aware. And so what I really want to, though, like, kind of get you guys to realize is the longtime burden of this weakness. So think of all the dysfunction from previous leadership, the silos, the lack of transparency and accountability, when, you know, maybe you could describe the leg as shaky last year with an interim superintendent, but during that time period, we saw management leaving, everyone leaving, and then, and you've heard about others, too, leading to greater instability and, no, leadership. We're very concerned right now that we do not have someone with real lived classroom experiences serving as our superintendent, and that needs to be made a priority. So I do want to acknowledge Chair Brem Edwards for getting that process started right away, and thank you for that. And I know all of you have been in meetings and working hard to get us a superintendent, so thank you very much for that. We do believe that it should be a transparent process, but nonetheless, we need an educational leader, and so thank you for getting started in that, and I really hope that it's successful. And if it's not, I hope that you would consider an interim that has lived experiences in the classroom, and I'll talk a little bit about why that's so important. It is really important that in order to stabilize our school district, which is in the, which is teaching and learning, that we have someone who is a licensed educator who understands the experiences we have in our classroom. Many of our departments have been gutted, everyone's left. I want to talk about the department that's most important to us as educators, the Curriculum and Instruction Department, and I want to bring this up because of the K-5 literacy adoption, which our elementary teachers are very excited for. You've got them all begging for it, and we're on a slow rollout process. And the board, the previous board, many of you chose to invest a lot of dollars in this program and do a lot of resources, and in fact, you're expanding by hiring more literacy coaches for the next year. So what's the concern is who's supervising the literacy coaches? They're gone. Who's supervising the supervisor of the literacy coaches? They're gone. Who's leading Curriculum and Instruction? Oh, he's gone, too. And so this is all stuff you know, so I'm not here to rehash that, but what I want you to experience is what does that mean for our educators, our PAT members, those coaches, those classroom educators trying to do this curriculum, do what's best for their students without the leadership? Is it going to be more work for them? Of course it is. More stress, more instability, yes. And will they do it and do the best they can for their students? Of course they will. But when I ask you the question, "How much stress can our system endure?", I want you to think about that and all the other departments and all the other ways that all that stress and instability is now the burden on our educators to make it work for our students. So I want to talk about us, the second leg of the stool. And, you know, admittedly, it's not just us, and I think you've heard about the principals as well and classified stuff, but I represent 4,000 educators, and that is your largest labor group. We so far have been the constant and the stability for our students, and we are already starting to see vacancies starting to happen there with our principals and our teachers. And so we, PAT, have really tried to offer a path forward, an opportunity to reset a relationship with the district, make this an attractive place so we can hire a superintendent, and yet, PPS management, which is pretty much devoid of anyone with classroom experience, is pushing for a major conflict, a strike. And then I want to ask you, do you think this system can handle another crisis like that?
No.
And I also want to be really clear that you have the power to do something about that, and I'll talk more about that, because you're our third leg. You're our voice for our communities and our families, the people who got you elected, the people who continue to support us by voting out on the bond, and these are the people that trust us, we're their most precious resource, their child, our students. So when I ask you, "How much stress on the system can we take?", I also want you to consider how much stress and crisis on this system before the next group to leave us is our community and our families. My pride in Portland and working here is that we capture so many of our students in our public schools. But how much stress are we going to put on our students, on our community and our families, before they start leaving, too? So you are that voice, and with no one left in administration, it is up to you to take charge. And I really want to make this very clear, because I've spoken to some of you individually or said, "We don't want to strike." Well, that is very much in your control, and you have the right to find out what is going on in bargaining and make demands and make sure that what's happening is what you And I know that you're new, it's been 11 days, but the time is now. And so I just kind of wanted to wrap up with what my asks are, make sure they're really clear. I want to meet regularly with the co-chairs, and I want to start that right away. We need to have real solutions that work for our students. I want the position of the superintendent to be an educational leader, someone who's had classroom experience. And don't break another leg in our very, very shaky stool. You do have the power, you are the leaders, you can be in charge, you can stop a strike and make sure it doesn't happen. So let's do this, let's do this before the start of the school year. We've heard from all the other comments how much you have to do, and I just, you, it's up to you. So it's time, I know it's only 11 days, but to get involved, we're in a real crisis, we're all here in the summer, and this is just the beginning. So think about, let's find real solutions to avoid a strike, you are in charge, you can do this, stabilize this school district. Thank you.
Before you all leave, if you don't mind, the next agenda item might be of interest to you. So first of all, President Cohen, I think I felt two people nodding on either side that we'd be happy to meet with you, but also, we have an agenda item that we want to give you an update on, the superintendent recruitment, because we've been hard at work for the last six weeks. So we've been looking for...
Settle our contract.
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
That's fine. For those of you who want to stay, you can find out what we've been doing in the superintendent recruitment.
Settle our contract.
So I'm going to ask...
I want the superintendent to give us a contract.
4,000 of us, together, we're considering candidates if we have a contract. We want to get a contract.
So I'm going to ask that we change the order of our agenda. Actually, maybe I'm not, I'm going to leave it as it is. And I'm going to ask Sarah King to come forward and speak to the real estate resolution. So we have a second reading on the proposed policy on June 13th, 2017. After 21 days of being open for public comment, the board is ready to vote on the proposed amendments. And maybe you can just give us a brief overview of the proposed policy before we move forward.
Certainly. Good evening, and as you see in your report, it has been the practice of PPS staff to transact the purchase, lease, conveyance, permit, and dedication of real property or an interest in real property by applying the same delegation thresholds as those set out in the public contracting rules. So we've been treating real estate transactions like any other contract. However, our public contracting rules actually do not specifically include real estate-related contracts. So we have proposed a policy to remedy that, a new policy to lay out how we are handling most real estate transactions, actually, all real estate transactions. But I do want to be clear how this differentiates from our surplus property policy. We have existing surplus property policy that states, lays out a process by which we make available for sale or donation of district property no longer needed for educational purposes. This is a process, and in most cases, anything that we would divest ourselves up through a surplus property process would be large enough that it would come to the board. So currently, our contracts, any contracts, either revenue expenditure that are $150,000 or over, comes to the board for approval. What we are proposing, that that same threshold apply to real estate contracts. So briefly, I'll give you an example of the kind of transactions that would not go to the board under this proposal, but instead would be taken care of or approved through the superintendent. And those kind of examples include things like easements. When the Portland Department of Transportation or the Oregon Department of Transportation are doing safety improvements on rights of way adjacent to our schools, as is happening right now next to Cleveland School, for example, sometimes they need to have the right to be on our property to put in additional safety improvements. For example, at Cleveland, ODOT is putting in new signals and new crosswalks and whatnot, and they need some extra property. They don't need to buy it, but what they do is they get an easement for us so that they have the permission, if you will, to put some of these improvements on our property, but they don't actually buy the property outright. Those are the kinds, that's an example of a transaction that wouldn't come to you under this proposal. Another example would be the farmer's market we have at Wilson High School. The Hillsdale Farmer's Market has a lease from us to have the farmer's market every Sunday. It's not a high-dollar lease, and it falls under the $150,000 threshold, so that's the other kind of thing that we would handle administratively under this proposal. And other small leases, we have many dozens of small leases in our schools for various things. What would come to you are the large things, like our master leases for our schools that we're not using, that we are leasing out to other schools, such as De La Sal in Kenton School. So large leases where we have a large amount of revenue that would come to you. Conversely, any large leases that we have for our own students, such as Ramona, we're leasing the Ramona for our students, that's a large lease that would come to you for, and did, as you remember, a few months ago, come to you for approval. So the upshot is we're enacting a policy to actually codify what we've been doing in practice for many, many years.
Great. I'd like to ask you just to stay at the table, just in case anybody has any questions. So the board will now consider Resolution Number 5492, Resolution to Adopt Board Policy 8.70.041-P, the real estate transaction policy. Do I have a motion?
So I'll move.
Second. Director Anthony moves, and Director Constan seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5492. Ms. Hewson, is there any public comment on this resolution? Is there any board discussion or any questions? The board, seeing none, the board will now vote on Resolution 5492. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution, the student representative?
Yes.
Thank you. The Resolution 5492 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with a student representative voting yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. King. So next, we have been hard at work, even though we've only been constituted as a new board for the last 11 days. We all together have been working on the superintendent recruitment, and I'd like to ask Director Moore to give an update on the process.
So we have been, we've been working on a renewed superintendent search for about two months now, so well before the new board members were sworn in, we participated in a task force. And over the last two months, I just want to tick off all the things that we've done. We refined the position description that is being used, that has been used to recruit candidates for the superintendent position and is informing their decision-making about a good fit with us. We've asked the community and board members to recommend candidates, and as a result, we have reviewed more than 40 potential prospects or candidates who have been nominated by various members of the community and board members. We revised the procedures for our background check process so that we have information earlier in our deliberations. We reaffirm that there will be a residency requirement for superintendent candidates. In other words, we're asking that they actually move to Portland. We are, we have conducted a comprehensive analysis of comparable school districts and established a competitive salary range for the incoming superintendent. We recruited candidates from a wide variety of sources. We selected a diverse pool of candidates to interview, including individuals from within Oregon and outside of Oregon. We have looked at sitting superintendents and senior education leaders from large districts. Based on our criteria that you can see in the profile that we produced, the job description...
Based on our criteria that you can see in the profile that we produced, the job description, we have selected seven candidates to interview, and since last Friday, we have spent approximately 15 hours interviewing and discussing these candidates. In the next two weeks, we're going to invite some of those candidates back for another round of interviews with the board, and then we'll subsequently have a third phase of deliberations. We'll continue to keep the community informed of our process as we move into the next stage of our superintendent recruitment process, and we're all very hopeful that we're going to get a superintendent that will, that will be, that will meet our needs and will allow us to get PPS stabilized and make it the district our kids deserve.
Great. Thank you, Director Moore, and to all the board members for all the time that they've spent over the last several weeks, including on weekends. We'll continue to keep the community informed of our process as we move to the next stage of the superintendent recruitment process. The next agenda item is something that we're going to add to the board meetings going forward, and that's board committee reports. So one of the things I heard talking to board members was an interest in knowing more about what's happening in the other committees, previewing things that are going to be coming to the full board. The board, the committees are really the places where a lot of the detailed work happens, and that in addition, because a lot of the work happens at the committee level, that there's a benefit for the broader community and the public to hear what's happening in the community, since often people don't have a chance to attend those meetings. So we're going to have this as a standing committee, a standing agenda item, so committee chairs be on notice that you'll be asked to report to the committee, and since we're a new board and we haven't officially met as a committee yet, or haven't any of our committees meet yet, we don't have reports this week, with the exception is there actually is a fairly timely one this evening related to the recently completed legislative session, and I'm going to ask Director Comstand to share an update from the board and OSBA's Legislative Committee.
Sure. So it's a little bit premature, OSBA hasn't prepared their full wrap-up on the legislative session yet, but I do, I can share some highlights and some lowlights, wins and losses from our legislative agenda, which is generally in step with OSBA's legislative agenda. So as most people know, the state school fund appropriation came in at 8.2 billion, and no, no agreement on new sources of revenue or significant tax restructuring coming out of this session. Two of the other major issues coming down to the wire were dealing with the voters mandate on both outdoor school funding and on CTE and graduation intervention funding through Measure 98. So the legislature came out on Measure 98 with 170 million, which is roughly 60% of full funding that was called for by the voters, and still going through rulemaking processes to what the edict will be for districts in terms of what qualifies for spending under 98. And then outdoor school, Measure 99, came through at roughly 55% of full funding, so that's 24 million. So I know that our team hasn't had a chance to go through and figure out what these numbers mean in terms of, of our own budget. Other significant issues coming out were delay of the PE requirements, which is an unfunded mandate for mandating a certain amount of PE hours, which was supposed to take place in the 17th school year, so that's delayed two years and created a new four-year phase in that will include some provisions for more flexibility. Work on dyslexia screening and state money to reimburse school districts on dyslexia Also, an allocation, a special allocation to assist school districts in strategies for combating absenteeism. And then two matching funds, which actually PPS will avail itself of 101 million in state bonds to fund seismic grant program, which we will be able to use in the 2017 bond. And then also matching funds for, 101 million in matching funds for just capital bonds, generally speaking, so, but those are separate funds. Other issues quickly were, there was a lot of discussion around the marijuana tax, and it ended up with 40% of the marijuana tax staying in the state school fund, which generates approximately $210 million. And ethnic studies, something that we, this district led on in terms of really supporting that legislation, was passed, Native American curriculum, so funding to develop culturally specific representing experiences of Native American students. And I think that's some other, few other smaller issues, still a lot of discussion around these issues of OEBB, PEB, which are these two insurance funds, which if there are modifications, it's an area where PPS could realize some significant savings, but nothing conclusive came out of this legislative session, but it's my understanding that there's still going to be conversation on that issue. So that's about it. Some wins, some losses.
Do we have a preliminary estimate of how the ballot, Measure 98, how we might, how things might land for us, just given with what we spend now and how the legislation was structured?
We're still working on that. We're looking at the whole budget measure, and I will be providing you with a report, and how is that going to impact the district, so it's in the work.
The, the estimate from where it landed is that it'll end up about $480 per student, but I think actually it wasn't conclusive as to whether it'll be applicable at middle grades.
Yeah, I mean, there's still some work we need to clarify with ODE and figure out how they're going to be implementing it, then accordingly, that we will have a better understanding. I don't want to give you premature numbers or analysis before we look at it.
Thank you.
So could you, a couple of clarification questions, the dyslexia screening? So has the state set up a fund to reimburse districts for that? Is that what you were saying?
I'm not sure that I know the mechanism for that allocation.
That's sort of what I heard you imply, so I just wanted to-
It's just a, an allocation statewide of a certain pool of funds, and I don't know, I don't know how that, what that pass-through mechanism is.
Okay.
I don't remember seeing any discussion on that.
Yeah. And the ethnic studies program, so the state is developing a curriculum that we might adapt, or what's, give more clarification on that.
It is, um, so, hang on just a second, I'll see if I can give you any more than what my own memory can. ODE directs ODE to convene an advisory group to develop statewide ethnic studies standards for adoption into existing statewide social studies standards.
Okay.
So it's a social studies work group.
So it'll be statewide work on that?
Yeah.
Great, okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Director Comstand?
Thanks for being our liaison.
Director Moore?
Do we have any idea when the marijuana money is going to actually show up?
I don't know. Superintendent Awadino?
It's really embedded in the general fund. I mean, it's not, we will receive directly from the marijuana money, it will go in the general fund.
It goes into the state school fund.
Well, yeah, it goes into the, yeah. We, we need to clarify all that.
So it's already factored into the 8.2?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so it's not, not magic money?
Yeah, we're not receiving directly allotment from the marijuana money, it's part of the 8.2 billion.
Any other questions? Great, so the next, the next item on our agenda is just board operations, and I thought it was, since we, this is our first regular board meeting, that we might talk about some of the things that came out of the retreat we had a few weeks ago, and also some of the things that are going to have an impact on both our, our board work, our board meetings, and how we, how we do our work and how we interact with both each other and also with the superintendent and staff and the community. So I thought maybe I'd just share some of those highlights, and I think we all realized based on the retreat that there is, we sort of barely scratched the surface, or just are getting started, and as we look to create new norms about how we work effectively together with each other and with the community, that it's going to take a while to sort of develop a cadence and practices and new norms of how we, how we work together, but just wanted to share for the broader community. And then I also, I think this is, be a start of a longer conversation for the board, and I'm really open to board members' suggestions about how we proceed, whether we want this work to go into committees, whether we want to do the work in work sessions or in regular board meetings so that the community can see our work, but that's what I, sort of the conversation I wanted to get started tonight. I think some of the things I heard at the board meetings is that we're going to focus our board work in the meetings on our strategic priorities, and that when we have a, a new superintendent and that they're on board, that we'll start a strategic planning work, and really that will be sort of the foundation of work for our board meetings and our work at the committee level. It'll also, the board meetings will also be the places where committee recommendations will be discussed, so instead of having issues coming straight to the board and having sort of superficial or just initial board discussions, we really want the committees to be the places where substantive, deep discussions can occur. But then them bubbling back up to the board meetings where committee recommendations can be discussed and shared with the rest of the committee. And hopefully, one of the values of the committee reports will be for, the committees really to sort of flag issues that are going to be coming to the board that are substantive, if board members have questions, are going to need more information, that's, that's an opportunity, sort of an early warning system for committees, sort of whether their work is on track or whether they need to adjust. Another thing that we're, as a board, interested in doing is making our public comment period a more effective opportunity for both the community, but also more effective for the board, so that the community input is, helps inform the board's work. We had a discussion about a series of protocols, about both public comment, but about how we engage with the community, and I think we made a lot of progress, but those need to be further worked on. We also discussed having, and we would have had tonight, the ombudsman here at the board meeting, so the district has an ombudsman to really, to help guide community members to better understand how PPS process works and to be able to get administrative decisions. One thing we thought was having the ombudsman come to the board meeting would provide an avenue for the community to be able to get resources or better understand how to navigate through the PPS system. So going forward, we'll be asking Judy Martin to come here, and of course, we'll continue to rely on Roseanne Powell, the senior board manager. In addition, we've already added Mr. Harris, and we must have been doing things okay tonight since you didn't have to interject?
[laughing]
So far. Okay, we'll see if we can get all the way through the meeting. We also wanted to, and this is, will be a resource question for the superintendent, but wanted to explore the opportunity of having some sort of translation services at the board meeting, so more people can access the deliberations of, of the board. And then, an idea we had that we're starting to explore with Roseanne Powell is moving our meetings potentially on a periodic basis into community settings or into schools on a regular basis, so that, as great as BESC is, that getting an opportunity to get out into schools and hear directly from school communities that may not want to come to this building, but, and also want to share the great things that are happening at their schools, that that will give us an opportunity to do that. So we'll be looking for, to schedule that going forward. And then, so that's sort of the, the full board's work and some things we wanted to change at the, or are interested in looking at, and we're going to be interested in the community's input, but also ideas, more ideas from the board. And then at the committees' level, when we set them up, I think we'll try and do a couple of things, we'll ask the committees to create annual work plans so that there's an intentionality of the work, and also, and build those work plans with the staff. But also, the point of the work plans is that, so that we don't have duplicative, staff doing duplicative work in front of other, you know, variety of committees, so we really can come up with a, we're going to have a big agenda, I think, this year, everybody wants to get to work, but we should be intentional and planful, and also want to really utilize staff's time in a, in a wise way, and not have them having to do duplicate presentations. So getting the committees aligned and integrated will be really important. So aside from the committees, we also spent a fair amount of time talking about how we communicate with each other and with staff and the community, and I want to say that Director Rosen and Director Moore were going to be on point for the revised draft. So I guess, look for suggestions from the full board on how we want to, if we want to wait till for the next retreat, or how do we want to work through those? We also have, so there were three main, I think, sets of documents that we were working from, our frameworks, one was a communication protocols, there was a board superintendent operating agreement, and then there was a general consideration of a rewrite of our board policies to modernize and revise them. It hasn't been done in a while, so we really had sort of three templates or frameworks to work through. So one of the things from the board, I was wondering if there was a preference for how we did that, or how we got after it, whether it be sign it to a committee, or do our work as a full board in a work session or in a board meeting? So I'm-
Do you have a statement?
Sure. Jump in on any of those topics.
So on, on the communications, the stuff you just talked about, I mean, I think a work session would be good, because the public would be able to hear discussions about that, and it directly, communication, the way we communicate directly impacts their access to us. So I would, that's what I would recommend for that.
Go ahead, Julie.
Well, you have your hand.
Well, I was just going to say, I would agree that I think the work session is the right venue, but the, with the communication protocols and the board superintendent operating agreements, I think that's something that we need to come to agreement on and commitment to immediately, really. It's been an area of significant challenges, and we have had protocols before, so we need to revisit those and see how we want to change them and how, talk about how we're going to hold one another accountable, too.
So I think, so I'm very much in agreement that it needs to be work sessions, so those two areas we need to move ahead of, but the big piece is whatever the communication policies in our agreements and working together, and how we work with the, with our community is incredibly important, that we agree on them in a public process and that we hold each other to them.
Director Moore?
I think for the board governance policies, that's a very big chunk of work, and it's very detailed, and it's, it's not the most scintillating reading. So I think for that, it might make more sense to kind of give it to a committee or a subcommittee to deal with it and then come back.
And you're volunteering, right?
Yeah, someone else.
The chair needs to be on that committee, and it's not me.
I'm enough of a geek that I would, I would volunteer, but it's, I mean, I, I think it's important work, but it's, it's pretty dry, and-
And we do have a head start on it. We have some proposed revisions to some significant areas of our policies.
Director Anthony, do you have a point of view on how, how we should proceed?
I would agree with Director Rosen. I, I think work session-
I'm sorry, of course, I agree with Director Rosen, I think a work session is the best way, always granted, yes, the, the policies themselves are very extensive and very dry, and the committee, either way.
Director Bailey?
So the- So, the, the work sessions is, and this is not just you, but Mike, the work sessions were the answer to which question?
I think the work session is the answer to the communication protocols, and Director Moore suggested that the policies go to a committee because of the substantive nature of the work. I mean, it's maybe 45 pages of the policy, the policy manual.
Can I, can I continue?
Let Director Bailey continue and then Director Moore's around.
So, yeah, I think the policy, putting that to a committee that would prioritize which policies are most important to take on first would be a good idea. Get some consensus on, on that and then dive in. And there may be some policies that might go to a committee rather than a policy committee, but might go to one of our standing committees might be more appropriate. But I just want to back up and say, thank you, great summary, and I'm just really excited about working with all of you, and I think we're, we're headed in the right direction.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just the other piece, you mentioned the communication protocols, but also the board superintendent operating agreement as part of that initial work session.
Moses, do you have anything you want to add? We appreciated your participation in the retreat.
Your leadership.
No, not think, it can wait for the work session.
Okay, great. So, I think what I'm hearing is, Roseanne, maybe on our board agenda, the next two meetings, maybe we can have discussions about the communication protocols and the board superintendent protocol, although we'll need to finalize that after we're done with the superintendent recruitment, because obviously we want to be informed by the new superintendent, but probably the next two meetings, schedule some work time, and that means I'm going to ask Director Moore and Director Rosen to complete your work on the communications protocol, and I can't recall who was on point for the board operating agreements, but we'll make sure that the assignment, so ideally, we'd have people come to the work session with a draft document for discussion. And then the board policy, I think maybe we should talk about that in the agenda-setting meeting with superintendent, because that's a pretty substantive piece of work that will need to be staffed in some way. So, anybody else? Oh, Director Combsdown?
I just wanted to note that, you know, the discussion, part of the discussion that we had around each of these issues at the retreat, you know, was a little bit in the context of our superintendent search, and that it's really important for us to be able to communicate with our candidates and with our eventual superintendent about the work that we're serious about doing on communication protocols, on professionalism, on governance policies, revising governance policies, because these are questions that are coming to us, and the more that we can show that this is a commitment that we have, the better shape we'll be in, I think, and the more assurances we can give our, our candidates and our eventual superintendent.
And if we're drafting the, the protocol for the communications protocol, like, I think like, in our current situation, I don't know if this is the right setting to say this, but, that like, there needs to be like communications between like the board and the student rep, because like, as a student rep, like, you're a board member, but like, you're not a board member, so like, that like, it's hard as a student rep to like, know why I can't attend and why I can't attend, and like, what things I need to be at, and like, what things like I should be at or like can't be at. And like, I think that'll make it easier for me to like, know like where I can stand and like where I stand on this board and what the work I can do on this board is.
That's a great call-out, and we're going to ask Roseanne to always keep you front and center, because there are actually very few things that you can't participate in, so we value student voice and your voice in the process, so we're going to want you to be, fully maximize your, or optimize your experience on the board.
Did we have any kind of orientation for you?
I've like trained with Alema, like Alema and I have sat down, who was the previous student representative, and when I went to DC with them, Alema and I spent like a substantial amount of time talking about goals that we wanted to do this year, and like, just certain things that the student rep does, so, you know.
Sort of, yeah, okay.
But I also think, aren't some of the questions that you have about what you can attend going to be clarified as we go through our policies?
Yes.
So, it will become more clear as we ourselves go through those, and we'll keep you informed as, as we make those changes.
Thank you.
So, wrap up that item. The next agenda item was other business. Does anybody have, any directors have any other business before the board that they want to cover? If not, we'll proceed to the next agenda item, which is the business agenda. Board members, are there any items that you would like to pull for a separate discussion and vote? Director Anthony?
Yes, I ask that we pull Resolution 5493, please.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda without Resolution 5493?
So, a second.
Director Sparza-Brown moves, and Director Anthony seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Excuse me, Director Bailey?
Can I, just some comments in general about this going forward? Is this the right place for this, or...
Can we wait, well, in just, in just a moment, you'll, you want to talk about the business agenda generally?
Yeah.
Just wait, just a second, and then we'll have a board discussion. So, it's moved and seconded, and now we ask Ms. Hewson if there's any public comment. There's no public comment. Now, is there any board discussion on the business agenda? Director Bailey?
So, this is a request for more information going forward when you have items like this, because it's a list of contracts. The contracts in general, there's no context for it, so I don't know if these are renewals or if it's new. If it's a renewal, I don't know if there's been an evaluation done of the prior work, for example.
So, let me just clarify, so we're still putting the contracts up online? Yeah, so we didn't tell you that? That you can, yeah, that should have been in your orientation. So, in other words, we have a system set up so that the contracts, the whole contract's available online when the board packet comes out, so you can start looking at it and get some of those questions answered. If you can't get them answered, you can go directly to staff or go through USF to get to staff.
Okay, that, that would have been helpful. Good, thanks.
Ask and you shall receive.
Yeah, and, oh, it would be helpful to see it in the context of the whole budget. So, if, just taking the first albina head start, it's the first contract listed here, I think, or one of them listed, that's part of a departmental budget. There's probably a number of contracts in there, and just, just, just seeing the whole, the whole context, are we going to have a number of contracts coming up this year within that department's budget? Just having that framework, I think, would be helpful for maybe a lot of us, because, and again, that information might help, but the bigger, bigger budget perspective, I think, would be helpful all the way around.
Just so, so I can understand and give you the answer for the question, are you asking whether this can be provided during the budget process, or are you asking, we provide you information before you vote on these contracts?
Before, before we vote. Yeah, and I, I don't know if that's an outrageous request in terms of time or...
Well, I'll sit and look into it and get back to you.
Okay, we can talk further.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any student representative?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a seven-zero vote with the student rep voting yes. Now, we're going to separately consider Resolution 5493. Director Anthony, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you. I move to amend the resolution to remove item number three pending further information from staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Director Anthony moves, and Director Combsdown seconds the amended Resolution 5493. Any board discussion about the amended resolution? If not, the board...
Do you want to explain?
The resolution deals with the sale of the latest Benson House. Item number three deals with the disposition of the funds. There seems to be some confusion and possibly dispute over past history and the path going forward is, staff is going to do more research and bring us more information so that we can come up with a solution. But in the meantime, since there is an offer on the house, we do need to vote to actually release it for sale.
That's good news.
Yeah, it is good news.
Any other discussion? Oh, no, okay. The board will now vote on Resolution 5493 as amended. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student representative?
Yes.
The Resolution 5493 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with the student rep voting yes. And is there any other comments before we adjourn the meeting? If not, Director Bailey?
People have been playing with this all night. This is a great thing.
Yeah, I want to keep this up here.
It's not playing, it's for concentration.
Pigeons.
If not, the meeting is adjourned. The board will now move to the Mazama Conference Room for the bond work session.